It's hot in here, isn't it? All right. I apologize for the temperature. It's humid is what happened. Good morning. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for September 13th. It is now 10:00 a.m. We're going to start with a salute to the flag. Madeline, would you lead us this morning?
What?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Of course. Von Hartong Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Janie Galasini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge something. We were not here, but Sunday was the 21st anniversary of 9/11. I know everyone is aware of these statistics, but I'm going to repeat them. We lost 2,977 victims in the 9/11 incident, in the attack. 415 were emergency workers. That included 343 firefighters. And I don't know the statistic of the emergency workers, whether they're police officers, or firefighters, or just first responders, who have since passed because of issues of the toxins that they were breathing on that day because of the collapse of those two structures. We can never forget this. Would you please join me in just a moment of silence? Thank you so much, and God bless our first responders. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three?
Item three is an appearance and presentation from Rochelle Pelissier, Executive Director of the Crisis Support Services of Nevada, on their role with the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline.
Welcome. Is it Pelissier?
Pelissier.
Pelissier.
They Americanized it a long time ago.
Thank you.
But as everyone knows, I answer to just about anything, so.
Welcome. How about answering to welcome?
There you go. Thank you so much, Chair Hartong and Commissioners, for having me today. It's been a long time since I came and visited you guys, many years back when I did homeless services, so I'm very pleased to be back talking to all of you. And today, I'm talking about a really important subject for not just Nevada, but for the whole nation, and it's our 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, the first step in building a behavioral health crisis response system. Many people don't know that our response for behavioral health is not the same as our response for physical health. Physical health, you call 911, you get someone to you immediately. That is not the case for behavioral health. A lot of times, you get no one to come to you when you're in the darkest crisis that you can experience. The moment when your pain is so great that suicide seems like the only option you have left to get out of that pain. So, we're finally, as a nation, building a system just like our physical health system, with a place to call, people to go to you when you're in a crisis, and a place to go when you're in crisis. So, I'm just going to give you a brief little overview. I'm hoping I... Yay! Why do you care what I have to say about this? Well, what most people don't know is Crisis Support Services of Nevada started right here in Reno, 56 years ago, in 1966. And you think about the technology back then. It was where we only had... There was no cell phones. There was nothing... There wasn't even 911 back then. There was only a landline in people's houses. And it started as a 24-hour volunteer hotline that went to people's... Like I said, to people's houses. And when they had to call the police because someone was at imminent risk, they had to send their spouse or their child next door to call from someone else's phone to get the police to come and help that person. So, things have gone... Things have transitioned, obviously tremendously, since then. And we started that way. The pioneers who started this organization started it because we had the highest rate of suicide even back then, and we kept that unfortunate designation way into the 2000s. So, I'm so proud of our, you know, of our community. We're the second-longest-running crisis center in the nation, right behind Didi Hirsch in Los Angeles. So, that tells you what our pioneers, our really brilliant people, and our forefathers and mothers, did way back then, and I'm just so really proud of that. We're not just the statewide crisis call center, but we're one of only 12 national backup crisis call centers. So, we do this for all over the nation. We take calls from all over the nation and from all over Nevada. With the internet, we take them from all over the world, quite frankly. We've had other people in other countries call us. It's a little bit harder to get them resources when they're in a different country, but Google is our friend. So, very important work we do and have done for 56 years. What a national call center does is there are 200 independent call centers across the nation who take care of their region. Our region happens to be the whole state of Nevada, but most regions are counties, different regions. And they're usually underfunded, so... And call volumes go like this. There's no rhyme nor reason. So, they never can staff up at their highest call volumes. So, when they can't answer a phone in their region, then it rolls out to one of the 12 national call centers to take care of that citizen across the nations. So, that's kind of how the lifeline works, and now 988 will work. We do lots of other stuff for Nevada, too. We take all of the child abuse reports for all of the rural counties 24/7. We take after-hours elder and vulnerable adult reports for ADSD. We take all of Nevada's rural behavioral health clinics' after-hours calls. We have a statewide substance abuse hotline. And then, we take after-hours calls for both UNR and UNLV's clinical services to take care of their students after hours. We take and deploy the immediate mental health care team in the rurals. That's a program that clinicians in Nevada work seven days a week, but it's from 9:00 to 6:00 at night. Calls come in to them. We do what we do, de-escalate, take care of them, get them safe, and then we pass them off to a clinician. This is rural Nevadans. Pass them off to a clinician in 15 minutes. Beautiful, beautiful. We need to build on that program. We're also the hub of Nevada's Open Beds Platform, where providers are in there, and we get people into a provider in the moment that they're in crisis. And last but not least, we take after-hours calls for Washoe County's 3-1-1. We've been doing that for just over a year. We're really pleased to help out with that, especially, we noticed when, you know, we were having all the COVID vaccinations and people were trying to, you know, that they were in crisis when they were calling for information about where it is. And we were able to help 3-1-1 staff to learn how to de-escalate and deal with crisis, and we were able to take those crisis calls and help them out, or if it wasn't a crisis, just help them out after hours anyway. So, we really love doing that with you guys. Last year, we took 87,000 calls and texts. And this is not like an Amazon, you know, call center. We usually have five to seven people on any shift. So, if you think about that many calls and texts, that's pretty amazing. 5,200 of those were by text messages. We had one of the... We started one of the first text message crisis intervention platforms in the nation, and we still take texts from that. We took 400 calls from victims of current or historic child abuse, if you think about that, and we took over 1,900 child abuse reports. We answered the calls to over 1,700 callers of victims of abuse to vulnerable adults. And we took 1,000... Unfortunately, we took 1,000 reports for that from Nevadans. We took over 2,100 callers who were sexually assaulted. And we had SAS advocates go to those sexual assaults. We have advocates go to every sexual assault in northern Nevada. We have an advocate there. We call out the nurse for the forensic exam. That's the one-in-person thing we do. And then, we took over 1,900 calls from victims of other crimes. So, I'm here to talk to you about 988. 988 is one of the biggest behavioral health steps forward in our nation's history. It's a call... It's a phone number, but it's the start of that bigger system I was talking about. And I call it kind of the Behavioral Health 911, although it doesn't work exactly like 911. And it connects a person when they call that 988. It connects a person to a behavioral health crisis consultant to help them address their immediate needs, hopefully de-escalate them, and then get them into the resources they need. If we can't de-escalate them, then we have to turn them over right now. That is law enforcement. That's not here. That's across the nation. So, that's why we're building that system of clinicians and others who can go out to someone in a crisis. It reduces healthcare spending to have someone focus on this, and it also reduces the cost of our law enforcement, that they're not out doing these clinical things and staying with someone in a behavioral health crisis when they take them to the emergency room. They have to stay there with them for hours on end instead of being out doing their work. So, it helps save us money across the board. It meets the needs of crisis intervention, which is very important, helps break the stigma, this whole process of mental health care. And it's, like I said, it's the first part of that behavioral health response system. And what does that response system look like? I talked a little bit about that. It's the Crisis Center, us, for Nevada, who... Someone to talk to. And usually, we can de-escalate about 95% of everyone who calls us. The last thing we want to do is call out emergency services for this. So, we will, when they're at imminent risk of hurting themselves or someone else, because that happens too, but we want to get them the help without having to call out emergency services. It also includes mobile teams to respond. Those mobile teams look like a clinician and usually appear who has experienced a mental health crisis and knows what, you know, knows what it's like to go through that. So, we're building those mobile teams now as a state, but those are the kind of the next step as we build out this system. And then, it also includes crisis receiving and stabilization centers. We call them crisis stabilization centers. And it's somewhere to go. It's somewhere you can drop in if you don't feel good. And instead of being an emergency room where they strap you to a gurney and put you in a hospital gown, most people don't need that in a behavioral health crisis. It's more of a living room setting, where you come in and you just get help from a clinician and peers and doctors to address your situation. Usually, you don't stay there more than 23 hours, and then they get you to the next level of care that you need. And all of this is based on essential crisis principles and practices. So, we're building this system. So, 988 is just the first step in that, that whole system. I talked about this is a national law that passed in 2020. This isn't just Nevada. This is the whole nation built this big process, and I'm so proud to say that Nevada has been leading that. We're very blessed, you know, that we're a national call center, so we are able to go and plan these things at a national level, not just a statewide level. So, it was the National Suicide Hotline Designation Act that started all of this. Rationale, a lot of this you guys know. You know, we've... Suicide has increased by 30% in the last 25 years. One in 12 people over... Excuse me. One in five people over 12 have mental health condition. I'd say more since COVID at this point, because we're seeing a lot of acuity because of COVID. Long-time crisis weighs heavily on people. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in our youth. That is crazy. Suicide is also the most preventable. What I like to say is, the best prevention for suicide is getting people help before they're in crisis, before they're to that point. And then, a three-digit number, so much easier than a 10-digit number. I have worked in this... For this organization for seven years with that 10-digit number. Half the time, I forget it, and I'm not in a crisis. You know, someone in a crisis remembering that 10-digit number is impossible. So, having a three-digit number, just like 911, is so easy. None of us think twice. We know 911. We're hoping 988 will do that also, and to make it much easier to get the help. Nevada, I talked about... I'm so proud of Nevada, because we're at the forefront. We always hear Nevada at the bottom of every statistic, you know, especially around behavioral health. With this crisis... 988 in this crisis response, we are not. We are at the forefront of that. Because of that, we've had... I just had Secretary, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Becerra in our office two weeks ago. Commissioner Hill was able to join us for that, complete with Secret Service. We didn't get a pat down, but it was a tight ship that we had to deal with there. And because we are leading not just our call center, but our state is leading in getting ready and planning for this whole crisis system. So, very excited to do that. And then, we also... Washoe County happens to be my home, so I'm very proud about what Washoe County is doing in planning for this crisis response system. The Washoe County Health District has really been focusing on this, and they have funded some planning around this. And I have been blessed to be able to participate in that planning, because it's important, you know... Again, this is my hood. You know, this is important, that we here are building the best system we can. So, what we've been doing with Washoe County is the Health District has spent $275,000 to plan our Washoe County system and what that looks like and how... Because this system has many different types of organizations working together. So, one day, hopefully, we can come and talk about the planning that Washoe County's been doing around this, because you're leading the state in this planning and trying to organize our services around behavioral health. And I just put some project considerations for Washoe County. I'll skip those, but there are lots of considerations as we plan this system for our county that go into how does law enforcement... And we, you know, we work with different cultural aspects. How do we get a hold of each other when we don't have compatible systems? What does that look like? So, lots of planning in Washoe County around that, and I'm very proud to say that. And so, 988 started officially... The rollout was officially July 16th. We've been taking these calls, obviously, for 56 years. So, for us, this was just another day in the neighborhood kind of thing. And 988 actually has started... The phone companies started implementing 988 months ago. They just had to all have it done on July 16th. So, that was the official rollout. And since July 16th, that first weekend, we saw an increase in calls of 45%. I think it was... Does this really work? You know, a lot of calls... Does this really work? What does it, you know... Since then, it's evened out. We've seen an increase in calls of about 30% to 988, because of 988. We receive about 500 calls a week from Nevada. That doesn't count the nation. That's just Nevada. We received about 160 texts and chats per week from the 988 system, because you can call, you can text 988, and then you can chat to 988. And we take all of those for Nevada. Our answer rate right now is 81%, which sounds like not a good number. We want to answer 100% right, but we also need funding to do that. And as Nevada passed legislation to fund this, they still have to go through the bureaucracy of figuring out how to get the money, you know, collect the money and get the money out and all of those kinds of things. So, we haven't done that in Nevada. So, the answer rate hasn't come up, but we answer in about 15.35 seconds, to be exact. Not about 15.35 seconds, we answer the calls. That's our average. And the average time... So, the other 19% maybe fell off or hung up. The average time in queue for them was 54 seconds, almost 55 seconds. So, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but a minute when you're in a crisis is a lifetime. So, we want to do better on that. We want to answer more of those calls, but we have to have staff and things to do that. So, we're shooting for that. Our key... What we're shooting for is 95% answer rate in 20 seconds. We already got... We got the seconds down. We just don't have the percentage down. So, that's just an update of what's going on. Numbers around how many call Washoe County 988? And that's still... It comes in on the same line as the 10-digit number does. So, we can't tell which are 988 and which dialed the 10-digit number. But our answer rates for the state, obviously, Clark County uses that line the most. They're at about 60%, because they have the biggest population. We run about 30%, and then the rurals at about 10%. So, just an understanding of how across the state, how many calls come into us and where they're coming from. So, thank you for having me. I'm pleased to come and talk to you guys anytime you want to talk about any kind of these subjects and what we're doing, both in Nevada, across the nation, and in Washoe County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You know, this is interesting. I was talking to a friend this weekend that I had not talked to her, rather... I'm fumbling a little bit here, in some time, and found out her sister had committed suicide, taken her life.
Yeah.
And I did not... I had... I did not know, and it made me very sad that she did not reach out for the necessary resources.
Yeah, it's very, very hard. And we haven't... I mean, we don't talk about this stuff. The silver lining, I say, of COVID is we started talking about mental health and suicide and what that looks like and how we prevent it. And the stigma around, you know, mental health and suicide, COVID really opened the floodgates of being able to talk about that. And you're seeing now that, you know, I didn't talk about... It's not just the person who is in the crisis that should call us. Quite frankly, when our loved ones are in a crisis, we're in a crisis. And I know we've all been through some kind of mental health crisis, either for ourselves or for a loved one. And the loved ones should call us, because what we do is we de-escalate them, because obviously, even me, when my child is in a mental health crisis, I'm not the Executive Director of Crisis Support Services anymore. I'm that kid's mother, you know? And how do I... You know, you kind of forget what... Oh, I mean, it comes back quickly. But the family members need us, you know? They need to call us, and then we help them, and then we help them to help their loved one and help them to get to the resources they need. So, everyone that's dealing with this kind of thing, substance misuse, behavioral health, should be calling 988. That's what we're there for, to talk and to help you.
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Rochelle, this is an amazing presentation. I don't think people appreciate the incredible work that your organization has been doing for years, decades now. And it was so... I was so proud to hear from Secretary Becerra how astounded he was about how far along Nevada is. And I know that we have some work to do, and your slide on, you know, considerations and challenges that we need to look at moving forward on how we're going to have these mobile crisis teams respond, what that will look like, how we're going to fund these things, how we're going to work with the state, and what that place is, where people can go to be stabilized. I know that there's a lot of work to be done, and I really appreciate that you're at the table and just let this board know how we can help support. I know we just moved the MOST team in the Sheriff's Office, or our caseworkers in the Sheriff's Office for the MOST team, and so I hope to see some results with that. And I also wanted to point out something great that you had said during the secretary's visit, was that young people do really like 988. It's on TikTok. They're talking to their peers about it, and that gives me some hope about young people who have been dealing with mental health crisis and that they're very open about it, and we all have something to learn from them. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Commissioner, is anyone else? Mr. Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Pelissier. I like it French. I just want to thank you so much for all your commitment to this community, and I've watched you throughout your career here being a helper. And you know, that's what Mr. Rogers said, "When things get scary, look for the helpers." And you've always been a helper in this community, and I sure appreciate you in this role stepping in, because I know you... That is what feeds you. And what's interesting is, and I have a member of my Sun Valley Cab here... I just announced this at the Sun Valley Cab on Saturday about this 988 rollout. And the interesting tie-in for this board, where I think you should be flexing your greatness and forward-thinking, is a lot of the coming around the mental health issue and getting it culturally acceptable, right, to talk about it, came from this board acting as a fire board. Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District was the first in the nation to start a data-driven trauma therapy for first responders. It's not just for our firefighters. We're going to open it nationwide. And what's really important, which I think is, we don't use enough of with our university being right here, what's really critically important is, this is a PhD who's helping them put this together and collecting the data. It'll be the first data to be published in a peer-reviewed journal when all the data is done, and they will take this on the road. But it is part of changing that culture, where now, this false and toxic sense of masculinity is, you can't cry, you don't get hurt, you don't need special attention for your psyche. Yes, you do. You're still biologically a human being. Has nothing to do with your plumbing, of your experience as a human being. So, I like to say, really, that TM started this and kicked the door open so that everybody can talk about this. And I will tell you, my Citizens Advisory Board meeting, they were writing down 9888, 988, because I think they see that it's okay to say, "I might be struggling myself with my mental health at this moment," or low-grade always do, "and I'm having an emergency." And it's also important that they have the tools to help anybody in their life who might be showing signs of this, that they have something to do, rather than the Google. And the Google can take you...
Commissioner, I'm going to break us for just a moment. Go into recess.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is all. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions? Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming out. It's very important work. All right. Mr. Manager, let's go ahead and take public comment at this time, and then we'll move back to item number four.
Item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment to be made... With comment to be limited to three minutes per person. Comments to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have Rick Snow, and as he approaches the podium, I have a document to distribute.
Would you distribute the document prior to starting the clock? Would you distribute the document prior to starting the clock, Madam Clerk? Welcome, Mr. Snow.
Yeah, Rick Snow, Washtau County residence. I apologize for being rude in asking her to keep it close, but she said she was going to take a few minutes and it ends up being a half hour. I get three minutes, that's where I get rather of. On their handout, top left corner says Fleetwood and Patrician. It shows a trailer with the awning out, the grab bar out, and the steps down. Looks to me like somebody lives at that place. We go to the second one. Now this is 9530 Fleetwood Drive. We see a tip-out out on the trailer and an awning established on the other side. Looks to me like somebody lives there. 320 Magnolia. We have a truck on the right side of the trailer, tip-outs out, stairs are down. Looks to me like somebody lives at this trailer. And we go to 467 Magnolia. First page shows the new fence. It shows the car parked in front of the residence, or the temporary residence. In the big picture, it shows a water line going across through the fence to the trailer. And we have 495 Magnolia. Car's parked next to the trailer, stairs are down, looks to me like somebody lives there. Then we have 385 Vagabond. There's a propane tank under the top of the trailer, which is a fire hazard. The rules say it has, that tank should be eight feet away from the residence. If you look at the tank in the big picture, the, you have a copper line going from the tank to the regulator and then a flex line going from the regulator to the trailer. Also in that picture, under the tip-out, you have water line going up and connecting and you have power going in. That power comes from the house, so that means it has one 20-amp circuit to service that trailer. On the other side of that trailer, you see the vehicle parked there. You see their tip-out out, they have made a porch. Looks like it's about 20 by 8. There's chairs sitting out there, there's flowers and pots out there, and their dog is barking at us who are taking the picture. Move on down to 68690 Budger. We show you the car parked there. We show you the front of it where the stairs are down and there's stuff under the overhang. When you look at the last picture, the lower right, the tip-outs out, the windows are open. Looks to me like somebody lives there. I gave you people 13 places to look at three weeks ago. I waited for a response, took three weeks to get a response. And then they say, we can't find anybody living there. I think there's somebody living there and I think they need to do a better job. Find a way to do the job, not a way to find not to do the job.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Farah Downey.
Ms. Downey, welcome.
Hi, welcome. Good morning, everybody. I'm just going to roll that up there.
Get the overhead focused.
The magic man in the back said just to put it on the square and it would pop up. Okay, fantastic.
That's correct.
All right. Do I move it or is it just going to zoom in and out?
Yeah, he'll zoom it out.
Okay, perfect. All right, so just to keep it brief, I want to say thank you to Rochelle. I know that she's left the building, but we all want to hear it because with mental illness, if it's not you, it's someone you know or care about. So thank you Rochelle for that and her team. Okay, so my name is Farah Downey and I have a real estate consulting firm named J.F. Downey Realty Consulting and Advisory Services. Under that, my company, I've developed a program that we have contracted with the Reno Housing Authority that we're really proud of. So I just want to kind of give you an overview of what it is and then kind of where we began and where we're at. And I'm not going to take the whole three minutes, hopefully. Okay, so the Emergency Eviction Prevention Program of Northern Nevada has proven to be very effective at keeping individuals and families in their homes and resolving financial debt to the landlord while preserving the rental history of the tenant. Strong mediation techniques partnered with supportive advisory services makes all the difference when an individual or a family is experiencing a situation that will have consequences leading to homelessness. EPN consultants have been very successful at bringing a situation of crisis to a positive resolution quickly. Our experienced advisors take a look at, a close look at each case using specific data that allows for a very targeted formulation of options, thus creating an individualized wraparound service. Our consultants have a substantial record of utilizing our positive relationships with community partners and extensive knowledge of resources to obtain, retain, or sustain permanent housing. Sustainable housing is always the goal and we are proud to achieve this for the citizens of Washtau County on behalf of the Reno Housing Authority. And I just want to say, we started out with just myself doing this for the first year. We're on our second year with the Reno Housing Authority and our third board approval. And we're really excited because we were able to expand and now we have a fantastic bilingual intake specialist as our admissions. We have a junior advisor now and then myself is the senior. And all year, last year, we had about 370 cases because it was predominantly referral-based all year. So we were able to affect 370 cases. That doesn't mean, you know, individuals. But this year, we're seeing an influx of about anywhere from 110 to 150 cases a month. So it's very exciting. And just yesterday, and I was at Sparks and I misspoke because while I was there, I had stated that I was working with the Hopes, not the Hopes team in Sparks, but it was the Hope, not the Hope, the Sparks Hope team. So I hope they forgive me if they see this, that it wasn't their Hopes team that I had met up with. Yesterday morning subsequently, it was just coincidence. We had gotten a call from Officers Silva and Turner because they're, and I believe Charles. And they're like this three-team duo that are the Hopes team out for Washtau County and they're incredible. And we got a call and within 30 minutes, I showed up at the door. It was a mom and a dad and three children, one of them with a highly disabled child. And they had experienced a lockout. Sorry, took too long, but thankful.
No, thank you so much.
All right, bye you guys.
Pam Roberts.
Welcome, Ms. Roberts.
Good morning. My name is Pam Roberts. I'm a resident of Washtau County for more than three decades and a resident of Palomino Valley for more than five years. I'm here to address Agenda Item 12C2. I can't stay for that later, so I apologize. It's dealing with ARPA funding for the Palomino Valley GID. One of the three roads that they want to use the funding for is Broken Spur. It's a major road with 1.4 miles of sort of asphalt-covered road and another 1.5 miles of dirt road. And it's really kind of a major road for our rural valley. It currently has over 50 homes and that utilize this road with expected at least twice that many could be built. And they are building based upon the current zoning. As you may know, the Palomino Valley GID has a very limited budget to repair and maintain approximately 95 miles of roads in Palomino Valley. The board members are elected, but essentially unpaid volunteers. They don't get any money for serving on that board. The Palomino Valley GID has two full-time employees, two contracted employees who help with bookkeeping and secretarial duties, plus they have an attorney on retainer. $250,000, which is what the amount of the ARPA grant would be, would significantly improve Broken Spur and the other road, Right Hand Canyon. I'd like to also publicly thank John Patterson, who's the trustee that put together the application. You know, once again, like I said, these people are not paid. They don't get any extra money for what they do. And he spent a lot of time with some of the staff to put together that presentation. And frankly, even though I knock heads with a couple of the trustees, I'd like to thank all five of them for the work that they do serving the Palomino Valley District. And I think, I hope that you will approve that application for that ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Newman.
Welcome, Mr. Newman, nice to see you again.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Charles Mark Newman, I go by Mark. I have a couple of things to talk to you about today. One of them is going to be the money that you're going to be donating to the Parks and Rec out there in Sun Valley. That would be greatly appreciated. We always need the assistance and help out there. Anything will do. My number two is on, I'm not going to be here later for it, but item number 20 on the Highland Village Phase Two. Mr. Ken Carter came and gave a presentation, a bullet point presentation Saturday at our cab meeting. Just like everybody else, some people want no development, but for the overall picture, everybody was in favor of it and liked the fact that they are going to be building houses, not apartments, that working class can afford to the community and the younger members because of the way the development's going to be made. The biggest concerns that was mentioned, not only from, I also sit on the board for our Homeowners Association, the CAB. Last month, you appointed me as an alternate to the senior services. The next day, I was appointed on the board because somebody resigned. But on Highland Ranch, and I know you, Mr. Hartung, have been on that road numerous times. School district says that doesn't need a school zone when the kids are crossing one side to go to Virginia Palmer or crossing the other way to go to the middle school. I believe strongly that that should be during school zone periods when the kids are crossing Highland Ranch Road, there should be a school zone with school lights in there, not just a couple push-button flashers and let the kids have at it. The other big thing that was mentioned by everybody is at the corner of Midnight and Highland Ranch Road, it's now going to be a four-way intersection. Mr. Carter of the Highland Village stated that there was going to be some funds put aside and down the road after there's enough wrecks and fatalities that there would be putting in a stoplight. I would suggest that while the construction is going, that that stoplight be put in while the development is close to completion because that way, you know, a little proactive instead of reactive can go a long way. And if we go proactive on the school zone and that signal light, we might end up stopping a lot of fatalities down the road. I appreciate your time. Have a great day, people.
Thank you, sir.
Keith Dayton.
Welcome, Mr. Dayton.
Hi, thank you. Commissioner, for having me. I'm Keith Dayton, this is my fiancee Wendy Donahue. We purchased a home in Red Rocks area August, and moved in August 2nd. We were unaware of the issues that were happening in that neighborhood. August 4th, we got a call from our neighbor. Wendy was down cleaning her house off in California and I was moving, I was actually at work in Sparks. We got a call from our neighbor, our house was underwater. I thought, what's going on with this? We were completely unaware that there was an issue. The neighborhood is great. All the neighbors are phenomenal. I've gone door-to-door and talked to many of them who tell us that this is a common occurrence, that the ditches in that area are very insufficient, that I've got pictures from several neighbors who all say, we love it, but this is something we have to sandbag every year. The day we were moving in, August 2nd, the county was out. I had no idea they were doing that. They were out there cleaning the debris out of the ditches right in front of the house we were moving into. I said, what's going on? He said, oh, we're just cleaning the ditches out. There's been some flooding issues, but you won't have a problem. That was two days before. I realized August 2nd was torrential rain. But now I'm finding out that the home we're living in.
August 4th.
I'm sorry, August 4th was torrential rain. And I thought it was an isolated incident. Now I'm finding out it happens every year. I walk door-to-door and I've talked to many of the neighbors who've tried to contact television, they've tried to contact everyone. The end of Red Rocks is a, I know it all flows downhill, but the ditches are insufficient. I've got pictures, neighbors have pictures, have all been submitted. Our side of the street, our east side of Bodie, the water goes over to half the street and all the way up to our home, to our new home. Our garage flooded out and if it had rained another quarter of an inch, it'd come into our house. Like I said, it's already, we found out it's flooded four other times. I went a block up, they told me the same issues. The dishes, the ditches are all insufficient. There's nowhere for the water to go. There is a lake down at the end of Red Rock, but it does not, it diverts around that. A lot of these houses have been here 40 years. Apparently the county did some removing, some changing five years ago. There was never a problem before that. Now several houses end up with the same issue. Ours, our neighbors, several. We are asking that the county please look into doing something with the flow of water in that area. Because as new homeowners, that's nothing. We called a person to come out and look and he said the same thing. It's a county issue.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you make sure that you have the contact information?
Yes.
Because I know that there's some plans out there that the listeners.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have William T. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. William T. Stewart, for the record, how's everybody doing today? So luckily, today's not too bad, an AQI day. I know that's on everybody's mind. We've got the fire and, you know, California's blowing west to us. Luckily, we haven't anything close by. But due diligence proves that fires continue to happen in Nevada and unless we're prepared, they're going to happen again. So going back a little bit in time, 2011, you may remember, it was a very long night for me. The Conrads fire happened in November. The Washtau Valley fire that happened in November as well. The Little Valley fire that happened in October. So what does that tell us? That biggest fires come in the fall. So the winds are going to pick up. The fuels are already substantially drier than they have been historically. We're under a huge drought. Chief Eisenhagen told you about the 1-hour, 10-hour, and 100-hour fuels. That's a big issue. Everything's ready to burn. And I think we are not being proactive in getting out to the community what we can do to provide protection and work regionally. That's a whole nother thing so far as regional fire department. But, you know, one of the things that was said in the Blue Ribbon Committee back in 2014 that was authorized through Washtau County, Sparks and Reno did not cooperate or participate, but I'd like you to read a short snippet of that. "There are numerous opportunities for enhancement of services through a regional fire system. It starts with providing public education to the citizens served about how they must take responsibility for protecting and defending themselves, such as becoming firewise and fire-adapted. A firewise community means that homeowners, firefighters, land managers, and civic leaders have done their part to prepare for the next wildfire. Code modification to help manage risk can be implemented, such as rigid enforcement of defensible space regulations in the wildfire interface areas or implementation of incentives for property owners to install built-in fire protection systems in their occupied spaces. This also helps reduce demand and shore up cost-effectiveness of fire protection in the Gerlach and Red Rock areas." And then I go to the call-in fire, 2011. Last sentence, "Creation of defensible space by homeowners in vulnerable areas will make a difference." And then "Building code enhancements to facilitate structural resistivity in the wildland urban interface." And then Chief Moore on 2021, he thought the board would be shocked to see the number of incidents for which responses were delayed because of jurisdictional boundaries. He asserted the government would be, would need to intercede to help save people's lives. So how are you interceding? How are we interceding? Defensible space for Truckee Meadows? It talks about being in a high, moderate, or low area? I don't think the homeowners know in this county. I've been trying to educate them as much as I can through HOA meetings and everything else. But we need to get the word out to people, whether it's firewise, fire-adapted communities, everything else. And then I have firewise brochures. And then NFPA talks about standard fire protection and these are all free. Thank you very much. God bless.
Wayne Gordon.
Welcome, sir.
My name's Wayne Gordon. I'm a, I live on the east side of the city of Reno. And I've become, been coming before this board since January, I think. And asking, I know you're all, 40, 80% of you already turned your listening off, so. You talked, asked, practically begged. you talked, asked, practically begged, along with a lot of others, that you fix our election system. We're six weeks out of another election, a general election. And I would like to have seen that we have had done, made some kind of an improvement. Instead, I found that there's long lists of people who are on our voter rolls who shouldn't be there. But worse, somebody I am very familiar with moved from Nevada to Texas. She changed her automobiles and her voter registration to Texas. And I looked her up the other night and called her and asked about it, and she said, yeah, everything's been done, except for the county of Washoe has not removed her from the voter rolls. So assuming that the stupid rules that our state got, there'll be a ballot going out for her. This is not something that should be happening. I'm going to request one more time, just for the one thing, clean up our damn voter rolls. We have a whole country that is highly divided. Why? Because they think if one side won, that the other side cheated. And it doesn't matter which side it is. And right now, all we're seeing when we should be trying to fix things so people see that it's a legitimate process, what we see is things like this. Thousands and thousands of people on the voter rolls who shouldn't be there. Ballots going out for in 2020 and in the spring of this year, ballots went out for these people. Those ballots should never have gone out because those are all subject to being fraudulently used. Now, I'm going to ask you again, do something to clean this voter situation up. If nothing else, at least clean up the rolls. That's easy to do because you've seen them send those little cards out to everybody when they change their voter registration. I have a whole bunch of them at home. You could send one out to everybody and it could just be returned with their signature to validate that they're still living there.
Thank you, sir.
Janet Butcher.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Thank you, Janet Butcher, for the record. Gordon, that was great. I really want to talk about something that's nonpartisan, and that is September 17th. It's Constitution Day. And I know that a lot of people don't recognize it. Last year, I came as Martha and got kind of dressed down about it, but I just wanted to remind, I didn't see anything on the agenda that there was any proclamation that coming this Saturday that it was Constitution Day. And I haven't really heard of anything happening in the Washoe County area. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say was it is Constitution Day on Saturday.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John. And I've got a document to place on the record and distribute.
Would you distribute that document first before Mr. St. John starts? Welcome, Mr. St. John.
Good morning. For the record, Nicholas St. John. This may take me a little bit longer than three minutes, so I would ask a little leniency for any time that I go over, it won't be long. Before you is, which I have up here on the overhead, are two of the NRS codes. They start, they talk about when the mail-in ballots start getting counted, and then the number three under 293.269935 says when that information can be made public. What I want to bring to your attention is that when it says they can bring it to public is after the last vote or after the polls are closed on Election Day. The problem with that is, the spirit of it is that you cannot release any of this information until after the last possible vote could be cast. That actually doesn't happen until midnight on the fourth day because now with this mail-in ballot voting, you can mail your ballot on Election Day, and there's four days before those ballots actually show up. The problem with that is, there's a thing called the time hack. So if they release the information about mail-in ballots and any other counting, then there is a chance for ballots to mysteriously and magically show up in the election between Election Day and the last day of mail-in ballots. What I'm asked on the commission to do is to make it so that they cannot release any information about cast and count until after midnight on the fourth day. The second document you have there is a petition I have. There were 326, now seven people who have signed it. It's asking the commission, commissioners to limit drop boxes to only be at polling places. Now, I've heard that that's already in place, but I don't know, I don't know how to confirm that. So we're asking for the commissioners to make it so that there's no drop boxes anywhere except at polling places where there's somebody watching them, where they're under lock and key, so no one can come up. I don't know how many of you have seen 2,000 mules and the way that that worked. We have testimony of people here in Reno that actually know people who did that, and so we're trying to eliminate that from the equation when it comes to it. One last thing, in reference to cleaning the voter rolls, I have found almost 11,000 people in just District B for the school district that have not voted since before 2016. Why are there 11,000 people still on the rolls when they not, why would they not be cleaned up? They haven't been, they haven't voted since 2016.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
Okay.
That's everybody who has signed in in chambers, and I do have an email that was submitted by Elise Weatherly that will be placed on the record.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment. We will go back, Mr. Manager, to item number four. I apologize, Ms. Enfield and staff.
Item four is a presentation and discussion by Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager, regarding a status update for the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund grant, $91,587,038, which was awarded to Washoe County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Welcome, Ms. Enfield.
It's been a little while since I've been here, so I have a few things to go over. This is just a summary. We'll start with the status update for our projects and then touch on reporting. And I want to introduce you to our dashboard for projects that'll give you the public and anyone who wants to look a little deeper into the projects that we're supporting with these funds, and then a little information on our community grant program, and then the division update. So, starting with, as you know, we received $91.5 million from Treasury for state and local fiscal recovery funds. We currently have 32 internal projects that have been awarded, seven subgrants to nonprofits and other governmental entities, and that is a total of $64 million. This includes the items that are on today's agenda for your review and approval, and just going to touch on those really quickly. We have an amendment for the mobile outreach vehicle command post that was originally approved by the board in December, and then four new projects, starting with Juvenile Services Multi-Systemic Therapy Mental Health Program for Youth in the Juvenile Justice System in the amount of $661,924. A project for Second Judicial District Court, which is the Family Peace Center, is a supervised visitation program for $480,000. Our next pro, new project is an election translation and county website accessibility project for access to Washoe County's information as well as the election information. And lastly, a small project for the seniors center for soft-serve ice cream to encourage more participation by seniors in the activities of the seniors center. We also have two grants, subgrants to general improvement districts. We have been working with all of the general improvement districts to identify their needs and to specifically work with them so that they could identify what they wanted to utilize the $250,000 subgrant award for. The two that are on your agenda today are Sun Valley GID for Recreation Revitalization and Palomino Valley General Improvement District for Road Restoration, and we're currently working with the Incline Village GID as they identify what their priorities are and what their scope of work is for the $250,000 that we will bring back to the board for approval. We're also working with the Gerlock GID on what their funding will support. So the, those projects are included in this dollar amount. The remaining funds, we're planning for the remaining $27 million, $1 million, and what we're looking to do as far as this planning is to ensure that we can complete all of our current projects. As noted, one of the amendments on today's new staff report is an increased cost for original project. We're finding that some of our projects are coming in at a higher cost, and so we need to ensure that we have enough funding to complete all of those projects. We also want to make sure that we can utilize these funds for matching costs. The ARPA funding included the state and local fiscal recovery funds that came to jurisdictions in specific dollar amounts, but Congress also gave a great deal of funding to federal agencies to increase the funds that they had in their discretionary grants, so they're giving out a lot more money in competitive grant programs that require match. For many of those programs, we can use ARPA funds as that match. So, the intent is to be able to use some of these funds as that match so we don't have to use county dollars where it's allowed. We will also be meeting with departments to identify future needs as we did when we first learned of the ARPA funding and what directed our first round of funding for internal projects, and then potentially any future community initiatives. Project status, just really quick, we have, so the first batch of projects were approved by the board in December. We have a number that have been completed. So we have six that are already completed. We anticipate a number of those that are more than 50% completed will be done by the end of December. Also, you'll see that nine have not yet started. That includes the seven that are on your agenda for today. So our projects are moving along nicely. Some are smaller projects, some are larger. This is just a summary of our completed projects. One of the top one is a subgrant to the children's cabinet. And then the last three, I just wanted to note, what we've identified here on the slide is really the outputs, like what happened with the funding. But as we move forward, we will be identifying more of the impacts of these investments and what, how it impacted the community and what was the result of the funding. We always want to let you know when we submit our reporting to Treasury, our, we submitted our second annual report, and this is on our website for the public and for any interested parties to review our use of funds, our strategic planning document, and our community engagement strategy. We submit a quarterly report on projects and expenditures every quarter. Our next report is due at the end of October, and these are also posted to our website. This is our new dashboard that was created. We're going to go to the website. There we go. This dashboard was created by Chris O'Brien. It's on our website, and it's very interactive. I just wanted to go here for a second so you can see if you, it has projects, the project status, the expenditure category, and if you click on any of these, it'll change and provide you interactive data on the different projects or on the projects under that category. So I just wanted to point that out so you can go and take a look, or if anyone can go and take a look at in more detail at a future time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Enfield? Okay, Commissioner Jung, I have you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report back. I was contacted by a newish person, five years, living in Sun Valley. And as many people who buy their new property are not always aware of what the features, benefits, and bugs might be in where their property is at, and brought up a really important point on the cab that maybe there's a way to use some of this ARPA funds either through the RTC, for those of you that serve there, in Sun Valley, and maybe with the Health District as well. Because in Sun Valley, because of poor development standards, we don't accept any of their roads because they're not up to county standards, which is great, but that also means that they have car-sized ditches in these dirt roads. Many times, law enforcement can't get down them, waste management, I mean, it's a public, there's a lot of ancillary consequences because of that. And I talked with a man relatively new there, he's been there five years, retired from the city of Las Vegas and the state, and decided to retire up here. So somewhat savvy too, you know, and I am wondering where we would put the request, not just for Sun Valley, I get that, where, you know, even though I say you give Sun Valley what they want. I mean, that, I think it needs to be an overlay over all of these roads from staff, Mr. Manager, that can tell us what need improvement just from a public safety, health, and air quality issue, because the dust too from these roads are, you know, unmitigated. So I just want to put that in your head. You know, I'm leaving in January, but this came up at the cab, and both candidates were at the cab as well for this, for my position. And it's something that new eyes are bringing in, and it often does take somebody new, right, to say, I don't want to put up with this. Other people have learned to live around it because it's worth it, the features, benefits, cost-benefit ratio, whatever you've decided in your mind. But I would really like an overlay of the community for these dangerous situations and what maybe we can do, if anything. It might be an SAD, I brought that up, and you know what, that was booed. It might be ask the city to annex them? Booed. Because that's, you pay those extra taxes to get those extra services, but it'd be neat to see a whole overlay of the county and roads that are so deplorable that it is preventing emergency public services as well as contributing to an air quality monitoring here that is always barely making it without the EPA coming in on us. So, that came up at my meeting on Saturday. As I said, put it where you need to do it, put it, because new people are coming in, and they might have zero interest in that. But I think it's a countywide issue of some very old planning that just wasn't done well. And it, it bothersome to people, and I think people are going to start demanding a little better considering we have this public infrastructure money on its way on the table, and I'd like to see it. to see it used. And I think the RTC, who basically prints money, should be the lead agency on this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Enfield. This is a great recap, and I love the online dashboard so that our community members can see what we've approved, where the projects are at. I think that's very transparent, so thank you for your work on that. I know that was probably a lift, yes, by your awesome team. And I just wanted to put a plug in, and I think I've already said this before, but just want to make sure that it's on the radar, to fund our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, get it some seed money with the ARPA funds. We had an amazing presentation by Brian Bonafont from UNR, and he talked about how 23% of our working people, they're the people that are in hospitality and also retail, they cannot afford a, an apartment, even a one-bedroom or a studio in our community. And so I'm very concerned, and he kind of reflected that, you know, with the recession, some of those jobs could, you know, if we have an incoming recession, some of those jobs could be in danger. And I just want to make sure we're protecting our working community members, and I want to make sure that we seed that fund. And I know it's a regional fund. It will go to Reno and Sparks, and I think it's a great way for us to be a regional partner and push those projects that our community really badly needs. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to jump in here real quick. I was going to do this during announcements, but this, I think this is a good time to ask about this. One of the, one of the big issues that we have out in Spanish Springs, and in fact, I saw a dump site on my way in off the Pyramid Highway this morning on BLM land, is people dumping illegally. So, Mr. Manager, can we, can we maybe look at putting together a fund that, and I want it to be two-pronged. One, I want it to be enforcement. I don't want to encourage this just by going out and cleaning up these dump sites to just, where people go, hey, they're just going to clean it up, so let's just go ahead and dump. I want enforcement as a function of this, but then, but then, there's a whole group of citizens, God bless these people, that will go out with their own resources and pick up this trash in the community, and it's, I mean, I need to hold my tongue because it angers me that, that there's not some type of a system in place where if you can't afford to dump, and sometimes, sometimes I don't think it's the homeowner. I think the homeowner pays somebody to come and haul their junk away, and then that person just goes out there, not like, they're not like one of the legitimate, you know, junk haulers. They're just somebody who's doing it, and they're advertising on Facebook or Nextdoor or someplace like that. And they go and they pick this stuff up, and everybody's happy, and then this person goes out and dumps it in the middle of the desert, and then, and then we become the recipient of it. And so I'm frustrated with that, and because, because our deserts are, they're ours. They belong to everybody, and they should not be filled with trash. And so if there's a, if there's a way that we can deal with this, again, I want an enforcement arm, and then, and then some, maybe an assistance arm where we put together something. And maybe what it is, maybe what we do, Commissioners, is we finance a program with waste management where we have dumpsters in communities periodically to assist with, with, you know, some of this illegal dumping. I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to think outside the box. Mr. Manager?
Can I just clarify, you want to use ARPA funds to do this? This is our presentation, I just want to clarify.
Yep, I do. Absolutely.
We'll have to check into the eligibility of that.
Outdoor recreation and trails, Mr. Manager.
I didn't say we couldn't, I just said, I'm just clarifying. I would also point out, we do have an illegal dumping, we've used waste, we've partnered with waste management on other matters to address it.
Yes.
And the issue may be, I don't know what location you're referring to, but it sounds like it might be BLM land?
It almost always is.
So, but I understand the concern, and we'll address it.
Okay. Yeah. And that's, that's, I mean, I'm just reading outdoor recreation. I know lots of people who love to go out and walk their dogs and ride their horses and, and ride their mountain bikes and do other stuff, recreate in our outdoor spaces. And so, all right, I'll get off my box, I apologize. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next. Forgive, forgive my outburst.
I'm not sure I remember what I was going to say about that.
All right. Commissioner Jung, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next, and we'll come back to Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you bring up a great point. I know that Assistant County Manager Thomas is working on a green waste pilot project with waste management, and that may be some of the things that we need to look at, maybe expediting, because I agree with you, we need to create incentives and more opportunities for people in what they do with their green waste. So I support you, and your thoughts.
The only thing green that I saw in the, in the pictures of the trash was an iridescent green life vest. So I, I don't know how green it is, but I have something on green waste in just a second here also. Commissioner Jung, we'll come back to you. Did you, okay? All right. All right, again, forgive me, I'm just, you know, I just think that this is a good use, and especially when I saw outdoor recreation and trails, because it's, I just think that it's important for us. Commissioners, if there's nothing else, Ms. Enfield, thank you so much. Okay, so Commissioners, I'm going to jump around a bit. Let's do item number seven and item number eight, and then we'll go back to our own announcements. It'll give us a little bit of time to collect our thoughts. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number seven?
Item seven is a recommendation to acknowledge receipt of the 40th consecutive annual certificate of achievement of X for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers' Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, for the county's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And we have our financial team assembling before you, led by our wonderful comptroller, Kathy Hill.
Holy mackerel. Welcome, everyone.
Brought the guns with me today.
And, and ladies and gentlemen, I want you to notice something here, because I think that this is important before you start, Ms. Hill. How many women versus how many men? Just saying. You guys are good with numbers.
We won't get into manager versus senior versus account, too, so let's just.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just proud of our staff because they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you. And on that note, this is the 40th consecutive year that the Washoe County Comptroller's Department has received this recognition and excellence in reporting. These are the big guns behind that receipt that are, should be acknowledged for all the hard work that they do in maintaining this certification. They are the unsung heroes, I believe, in the Finance Department, and I'd like to take the time to introduce them one by one because they are as equally important. We have Asta Dominguez, our Senior Accountant, Michelle Gloam-Michelichek, our Accountant Two, Nana Hawang, our Accountant Two, Bob Andrews, our Accounting Manager, Russ Morgan, our Accounting Manager, Darlene Delaney, our Senior Accountant, Joyce Garrett, our Accountant Two, Susan O'Hara, our Senior Accountant, and Rebecca Mosier, our Senior Accountant. These are the big guns, and this is what keeps the county going for accurate reporting. So thank you for acknowledging them. We all appreciate it, and we all appreciate a photo.
Thank you so much. Okay, so let's, before we do that, hold on just a second. From the Sheriff's Office, who do we have? We have all you guys from the Sheriff's Office right here. Okay, so what we're going to do, Kathy, let us read this proclamation.
Of course.
And then we'll all pile down in the well, and we'll take each individual photograph. We'll just take a quick recess, and instead of going down and coming back up and going back down again.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay? So just have a seat for just a moment? Thank you. Do we need, hold on just a second. Do we need a motion? Do we need action on this? I don't see our attorney. I'm going to, just, let's do it anyways. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I have a motion to accept this, and I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Is there any, is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay, all close public comment, bring it back to the board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item number eight, proclamation for National Forensic Science Week in Washoe County. Would you guys all come down? Thank you for your patience, I genuinely appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, now, to the girl.
Yes. She's good. You love her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the opportunity to present this proclamation to this amazing team. Washoe County, Nevada proclamation, whereas forensic science service providers address critical questions in civil and criminal investigations and trials in Washoe County, and whereas forensic science service providers serve a vital role in the criminal justice system by providing scientific information to investigators and officers of the court, and whereas the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Forensic Science Division is home to over 50 scientists, support staff, volunteers focusing on biology, DNA, breath alcohol, controlled substances, crime scene response, firearms and tool marks, latent print processing, latent print comparison, toxicology, and serving 15 of Nevada's 17 counties. Amazing. Whereas, September 18th through the 24th, 2022 is recognized as National Forensic Science Week throughout the United States, with 2022 being the 10th annual celebration. And whereas National Forensic Science Week provides a special opportunity for forensic science providers to acknowledge the contribute, the contributions of forensic scientists in the laboratories which these individuals work, discuss the operational needs of local forensic science laboratories, and celebrate the field of forensic science. And whereas, all citizens of Washoe County are encouraged to learn more about forensic science and its contributions to the safety and security of our community. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners does proclaim September 18th through the 24th, 2022 as National Forensic Science Week, dated this 13th day of September, signed by our chairman. And do you want to come up and say something?
Please. Introduce your team and...
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. My name is Stephen Johnson, I am one of the supervising crimelists with the Forensic Science Division and our interim acting director. And I have Laura Dixon, she is one of our supervising crimelists, Tiffany Black, Rochelle Woodard, excuse me, Jennifer Beckman-Sallis, and Savannah Blunklis, analysts within our laboratory here as well. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, thank you. Rochelle, is your husband a police officer?
Yes, he is, and he says hello.
Yes. Thank you. Good friend, great, longtime friend, good fellow. Thank you, thank you for your service. You know, I think it's important to mention this. You mentioned, Vice Chair Hill, in the proclamation, 15 of 17 counties, that's in Nevada. How many counties do we also serve in California? Do you know the answer to that, Stephen?
Yes, we do serve one county in Northern California as well.
Just only one?
Yes.
Okay.
Mono county.
Mono. Okay? Okay? Mono? Mono? Potato?
Exactly.
Okay, very good. I mean, you guys, Commissioners, if you have not taken a tour of the forensics lab, it is amazing. It's, I mean, the stuff you guys do and can uncover is just, I mean, it's mind-boggling. And thank you so much for the hard work because you are integral in solving so many of the crimes that our county and our state faces. So, and by the way, 15 of the 17, I believe the only two are Clark, who has their own forensics lab, and I think Lincoln.
Henderson has a small, a small prime laboratory.
Okay.
And they provide limited service.
Okay.
If you are in Las Vegas Metro, you only have the full service lab.
Right. And then, and then do they do, they do Lincoln County, don't they? Because I don't think we do Lincoln.
We do have Lincoln.
Right. Right. That's what I thought. Okay. Was that in the form of a motion, Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we will go into recess. Let's make a photograph. That now takes us back, Mr. Manager, to item number six, I believe, which is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements.
Item six is Commissioners, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
I do, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of items. The first is to share with the commission and the public that the county received an announcement or statement from the state on September 1st regarding cannabis lounges. We received a letter from the Cannabis Compliance Commission asking for clarification of Washoe County's position on licensing of cannabis consumption lounges. This is in part due to some definitional changes in NRS. The request did, the letter requested the response by September 9th, about a week later. And so, given that the county has not taken a position on consumption lounges, I wanted to let you know, we did send a response letter stating that the county currently does not allow consumption lounges, but is scheduled to take the matter up at our next meeting on September 20th. So, that's number one. Number two, with regards to early vote centers, I wanted to let the commission know that the county lost a total of 10 early vote centers for the general election. Nine locations were due to railies notifying us they were withholding all of their locations that had been previous participants. This is particularly problematic in the South Valleys, where we have very heavy voting activity at the South Valleys Library and also at the railies that we've previously been able to work with. Work was done to fill as many of those vacancies as possible, but that's why we have a few, will have fewer locations or sites than we have in the primary. One other note, Washoe County, as far as the early vote centers and the drop boxes, they are all staffed. We do not do unstaffed votes, drop boxes. The lone exception is the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, which has their own arrangements, and we are not in a position to enforce otherwise. Those are my announcements, Mr. Chair.
Correct, okay, because of their sovereignty. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Herman, I have you sign in first.
Chair, I got it. And thank you for that information, Mr. Manager, because that was one of my questions that I was going to ask, because that's quite an important thing, that our chain of custody is very unquestionable. Thank you very much. So, the Sun Valley Cab was well-intended on Saturday morning, as Commissioner Jung had said, and I was really pleased that we had a developers representative there, kind of a coming on, you know, to our cab meeting, and that was, I thought, was very good. He was very transparent and honest, and he was appreciated by all the members of the cab. On the subject matter we were talking about just a little while ago, we have a problem, I think that might be a legal problem now due to safety. The gentleman that's been hauling in all kinds of materials and junk and old cars, and he's doing it again, but he also has dug a trench across the road, which is kind of a dangerous thing now because some people with cars can't even get home, unfortunately. So, I just was hoping our attorney would look into that possibility of maybe using some, some legal methods to solve this problem. So, then, and back to the election, the people that, on the voter's roll that are not citizens of the state of Nevada anymore, there was a, there's a lady that is running for the GID in Incline Village and paid for the list of voters, and, and she's checking them out, and there's people from Europe and people that live in Montana and all those sort of things. So, she asked me to mention this today, and hopefully we can, in the short amount of time before the elections, maybe, maybe work on this. I've been asking for it for eight years, so. The last thing I wanted to talk about was some of my constituents had, had shown me this book, this little pamphlet. It's very filled with very good information. Three ladies, very wise and very hardworking, put all this, compiled all this information, and I think that it would be wise if everybody got a copy of this and read it. It's very, very educational. Thank you so much. I made copies, and you can have that copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to congratulate the balloon races on a fantastic event this last weekend. I was able to attend on Sunday, and I got to see Commissioner Lucy and his beautiful family there, and he reminded me the importance of the leadership of this board to ensure that that event is free and open to the public, and I just think it's amazing, the work of this board, and also the leadership of Commissioner Lucy to ensure that we really support these community events, because they bring people together, even in the smoke. And so, I congratulate the balloon races. I also had a really inspirational opportunity to go see the state of the city for the City of Sparks, and Commissioner Kitty Jung was there, and so was our chairman, and it was great to support them and their work, and I really see, and I know that my coworkers at this board see our regional partners as coworkers, because we all need to work together, and it just was very exciting to see all the progress that they're making. I grew up in that community, and I'm just very proud of the future leadership and direction of that board. I also have a request to the DA's office and the County Manager's office. As everyone on this board knows, we appoint various positions at Washoe County besides our county manager, and I was recently doing some research in county code and NRS on these appointments, and it seems like we're required to receive annual reports by the Alternative Public Defender's Office. That's in county code 5.4504, and the Public Defender's Office, that's in county code 5.447. And I just, I would like some clarification, and I know I'm not a new board member anymore, but as a relatively new board member, how do these positions remain accountable to the commission when we don't receive annual reviews? So, I just would like a report on that, but also these reports by the Public Defender and the Alternative Public Defender's Office, and I'd like to see their reports also from last year, because I don't remember ever receiving these reports while I've been in office. So, that's, those are my statements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I know I've heard from them, but I don't know whether it's been on a yearly basis. Commissioner Lucy, I have you sign in next.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this morning. It's been, first I want to start off, it was wonderful to spend Sunday with Vice Chair Hill at the Great Reno Balloon Races. Once again, four days of a beautiful legacy event that we get to share here in Northern Nevada, free to everyone. And it's through the continued sponsorship, a lot of it because of Washoe County and what we do here at this, at this organization, but through a lot of community stakeholders, the City of Reno, RSCVA, a lot of the local casinos, Atlantis, Bonanza Casino, Peppermill, you name it, to keep this event free for everybody. And I want to remind everybody, even during COVID, it was one of the only events that we could hold because it was outdoors, and we allowed individuals to get outside and, and participate. So, smoke, and seems like the only thing that kind of deters us or stops that event from happening is wind, and we've had that in past years, but very fortunate and very neat to see it be there on September 11th to honor that day. We had, there was a flyover, and Washoe County is very fortunate with our new pilot that we carried the American flag during that, during the National Anthem that morning, and had a flyover from the Reno Air Races pilots that participated in a celebration for September 11th for that remembrance. So, a big, huge thank you to Pete Copeland, who's the executive director, and all of his work every year. He does a great job. All the volunteers, obviously, they get up every morning, City of Reno staff that gets up and makes sure the streets are safe, and RPD, our Washoe County staff that shows up to our CERT team, that, a citizen team that shows up and helps people direct traffic, phenomenal job. And then our Washoe County staff, our park staff, that makes sure that that park is clean and maintained, and it is one of our signature beautiful parks, and we take a lot of pride in that park. And because we take a lot of pride in that park, we had some, we had a wonderful event, and just a huge thank you to them. On Friday, I got to participate in the Nevada Military Support Alliance tournament, golf tournament, at Lake Ridge Golf Course. And the reason I bring this up, this, it was a well-attended event. Congressman Ammey was there, Lieutenant Colonel Andre Barry was there, a number of veterans were there, and this is a wonderful event that supports the veterans within our communities for their families, those families that, those Gold Star families that have lost a member here in the state of Nevada, and those that have come back but still need assistance. But the big portion of that, and I think it was, I want to, the reason I want to highlight it, is that Nevada Peer Support Alliance, which is, as Commissioner Jung brought up, it was a, was kind of a initial start, and funding was from the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection Board, Fire Commissioners, this board for Dr. Steve Nicholas and Battalion Chief Derek Reed, that came and asked, and asked how important this is. So, not only is it for firefighters, as she's pointed out, they've expanded, obviously, to the sheriff's office and all, all members of those first responders, and are working also with veterans. And so, it's an open campus idea. They're continuing to build that, and so, it was, it was great to see them. You know, Sheriff Darren Balaam was out there. We had Chief, Police Chief, Chief Soto was out, Jason Soto was out there. So, it was a phenomenal day, raised money, raised awareness for veterans and those, those causes, so wonderful thing about that. I want to shoot a quick thank you out to the Reno Sparks Convention Visitors Authority, once again, helping out youth sports in this area during these nasty smoke days that seem to be more prevalent now than they ever have been, and opening our facilities throughout the region for these children to practice during those smoke-filled events. And so, when we talk about certain things like that, I just, it's important that, once again, we as a governmental agency are continuing to give back to our community. It's not just about visitation, but it's about making sure that people understand that we are here to support our community as well. So, thank you for opening your doors to make sure that those kids are safe and can continue on with their sports, because it is so important for them. But this brings me to my next ask. One of the discussions that I had last week with the constituents is, you know, we're in great need of, continuous need of flat fields here in Truckee Meadows. As we continue to grow, the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County, the unincorporated area, our flat fields, and we have some wonderful facilities with flat fields, but they are overwhelmed with baseball, soccer, football, rugby, lacrosse, cheerleading, you name it. There are a number of different challenges that we have across this region, and the City of Reno, obviously, working at the Moana Stadium, is going to bring the pool online, but we just still don't have enough flat fields. And I would ask that, you know, some, you know, going forward, that this board, future, in future budgets, if we can look and work with the Flood Project, Tamoa, Washoe County, to identify, I know we have, the Flood Project has property off of Edison Way, where we placed a lot of the, the, geez, the, not decontamination, but the isolation village when we were trying to, during COVID, but those, those areas, those lands could be easily converted into flat fields, and if they flood, because they're in a flood zone, so be it. They flood, there's nothing that would be damaged by those. And so, I want to challenge this board to continue to look for those things for, for youth sports, because it puts a tremendous amount of strain on the school district to try to provide, and there's a liability and some different things that, but if we can provide those types of open field playing spaces for, for kids and youth, it's tremendously important for our upcoming individuals. And then, as it pertains to the public comment this morning in regards to the ditches, we know the ditches are very difficult crossed, and not only in the northern part of the county, but also in the southern part of the county, and it's, one of the challenges is living in the unincorporated area, is that you don't have all of the additional services that you may, you may receive by living within the incorporated areas. But there are challenges that we need to continue to look at, specific drainage areas. We've had some monsoons this last couple of weeks, and, and, last couple of months, unexpectedly, but we've had, we're going to see different weather patterns, I think, in going forward, and if we can continue to look at that and see what we can do in regards to how that drainage is addressed throughout our community and throughout our region, I think that's important. And then, finally, East Tricky River Canyon, once again, if we can look at, we did, I did bring it up at the last RTC meeting, but once again, if we can look about how we can partner and with Story County in some way, shape, or form on enforcement up and down I-80, I know 341 and 431, there is going to be a motorcycle charrette about motorcycle safety in October that the Department of Public Safety is putting on just specifically for 341, but there are challenges within, on those roads, and so, if we can somehow work with Story County to address those, those safety concerns, it will be of great need. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jung, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of announcements. The Community Health Alliance new clinic was opened in Sun Valley, in my district, that will be providing people who are uninsured and/or not signed up for their Affordable Care Act benefits. And I will tell you, when we did the tour, it is a beautiful facility, which I believe everybody deserves when going to have services of health care. And what's most important, we know that's a critical care need, where your tax dollars are going for fire services, because my population has a, not a lot of historical experience of accessing health care. So, a lot of our fire calls, as you see, the vast majority, 90%, are medical. So, this will be a real pressure valve release for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District at that very busy station. The second part that I love about it is, it's also a, in a mini shopping area, a little shopping, you know, center that has not really, it's a beautiful center, it hasn't really received the traction in the years that I've been here in terms of it being thriving, and I believe putting this busy, active, open health clinic is going to help those businesses in that whole area as well to have more customers there. So, I, that was a, really a banner day for Sun Valley, and I want to thank the Dolan Foundation, because they provide a lot of money for that to go in because of the need, and we are realizing it's saving the tax dollars as well, taxpayers as well through your fire, so we can solely focus on fire response rather than so much medical that we do out there. I also attended the Sparks State of the City event yesterday, and wow, I was really blown away by that team and that leadership of Mayor Lawson, and from being there and watching the presentation and how they are funding their ARPA funds, I really will tell you, and watching Sparks and this whole region, really, over the last 18 years, this city council and this mayor are meeting the moment, and I cannot be more proud, because I represent West Sparks, and so, I need every single city and GID and all these other partners here to do well, because then it makes all of us rise up to do well, rather than trying to pull people along. So, again, I've told you this before, and I truly believe this, we are finally all pulling in the same direction, it feels like, but what I wanted to bring up to this board about one of their best practices that I noticed, they do a thing called Grass for Grass. They take their marijuana taxes that they collect in the City of Sparks, and they specifically send it to flat fields and built this whole build-out of Eagle Canyon, so that taxpayers and the average morality police out there, if I might say.
Golden Eagle.
Golden Eagle, sorry, I said it wrong. Here we are showing taxpayers... Here, we are showing taxpayers, and I think it's just clever, Grass for Grass. So I would challenge this board, as you move forward, and I have asked for years, but, you know, listen, it doesn't, it's not as criticism of staff, I might have been asking for stuff that's illegal, right? That doesn't mean that they don't, that's, that they didn't do it, yeah, who cares if you ask for years? That's because it's a full stop, you can't do that. But for this board, whoever's still going to be here, I would really get staff to work hard, to show the unincorporated county vis-à-vis a tangible project where their Grass for Grass is going. And I, I just think they're brilliant. I enjoyed every single council member's vignette, and how they're approaching their mission statements, they are firing on all cylinders. And that is such a delight to watch as a policymaker, because we know that's when things get done. And they're getting stuff done. And I am proud of them, and I'm proud of their downtown, and how much work they've done into that district. It is a cool place to hang out, you can tell it's really where, no offense, I consider myself old in this situation, it's where all the hipsters are, which I'm not a hipster, and they definitely don't mistake me as such when I try to be cool around them. It's really changed the face of that downtown, and created a place, I think, for people. It's always been a great place, like, I always loved the Farmer's Daughter's, Farmer's Market, yeah. But we, I always loved that when we first moved here 22 years ago. But Sparks is really doing placemaking, and I, I think we can learn a lot, there used to be a T-shirt about that, "Mr. Chairman, Farmer's Daughter Sparks." This is the same guy that wrote, did the Reno Envy shirts. So I just wanted to let people know, I was there, and I was so proud of them, and you guys are lucky, commissioners, of who you're going to be working with over there. And then finally, just a little bit of good news, for those of you who are listening or not, UPS is hiring 400 new employees for the holiday season, starting today. They're doing it virtually, you can know within 25 minutes if you got the job. So anybody who needs extra little bit of coin for the holiday season, or you're planning to go on your cruise, or whatever it is, this might be the thing for you, to put a little bit of extra money in your pocket, or you want a side gig. UPS is not a bad place to work for, and they, they make about six figures a year. I mean, they're, they're brutal on their drivers, but it's still, this is a career path that you could be getting into, or more of you retiree types, this is some nice spending money to make some extra dollars, and they'll hire you within 25 minutes. Who else has that anywhere? And that's the way I believe work is going to change too, via text and quick, either, either you want me or you don't, and I'm moving on. So 400 people are, are needed, at least, so I genuinely encourage you to do, and it's not all drivers, and it's not all back, handling stuff. If you're a technical, good computer person, and good at keeping, not me, the details going, these are jobs for people, and they're part-time, but they can turn into a full-time job. So I, I just think that's a great announcement for everybody, and maybe even I'll apply, I don't know. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in for a second time.
Thank you very much. I forgot one thing, I had it written down, but I just overlooked it. And regarding the folks in Silver Knolls that were flooded the first or second day they lived here, thank you, Mark, for being so quick about following up on that, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lucy, I've got you signed in one more time as well.
Thank you, Chairman. I did forget a couple of things that I did want to ask, I had one, one ask. I would, for our last meeting of this month, if, Manager, if we can get an update on the discussions, on how the dispatch conversations are going between you and the stakeholders, that would be wonderful, just to kind of get an update on where we are with that. And then, lastly, what I want to do is, is congratulate the newest member of the Reno City Council, on September, last week, on September 7th, Reno City Council did unanimously vote to appoint Ms. Kathleen Taylor to fill the vacancy left by Councilwoman Jordan. And we want to wish her the best in her new endeavor, serving with the Reno City Council, and I know we look forward to working with her in that, in that role. But also, you know, a big congratulations to Councilwoman, or I should say, ex-Councilwoman, but still Councilwoman Neoma Jordan, she's now with the Downtown Reno Partnership, another big step that this community has taken on, that Washoe County plays a major role in, to clean up our downtown, and really, and really fulfill that, and her passion, and to be the Executive Director for that will be welcomed, and couldn't be, couldn't be led by a better person than, than her, and her dedication and commitment to the downtown, downtown Reno area. So very much congratulations to both women on their, their new roles, and we wish them the best.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'll jump in here. Let me start with something that is in front of everyone right now, which is smoke. And there's really nothing that we can do about it, but we heard about this at our last fire meeting, which was on last Tuesday, but I want to mention it again, which is the locations for the Truckee Meadows Fire and Rescue Autumn 2022 Green Waste Collection. So for those of you who have the need to dispose of, of your green waste and create defensible space, and, by the way, you can find out more about this, I'll mention the dates, but you can find out more about this, let me pull it back up, because I brought it up on my, on my email this morning, it's, it's tmfpd.us, and then, but down at the bottom, under Newsroom, you can get all this same information. So you have to scroll all the way down to the bottom of the page and go to Newsroom. In fact, I think I need to mention to the chief that we need, we need some kind of a link up top, so that people can easily find this. But the, the Green Waste Collection Days will be October 1st and 2nd in Washoe Valley, October 9th, Geiger Grade, small loads only, October 15th and 16th in Lemon Valley, October 15th and 16th, Silver Lake, October 22nd, Palomino Valley, October 23rd in Spanish Springs, November 5th in Mogul, November 5th, Rancho Haven, November 6th, Wadsworth, and December 3rd and 4th, back in Washoe Valley again. So this is pickup truck and, and only, no trailers or flatbeds, but the, the idea of this is to keep our community clean. And by the way, that last, that last statement that I wrote, that's, that's just for certain areas and certain times, and so those will, those, they'll, they'll let you know on the, on the website. And defensible space is so critical. We've seen wildfires devastate our region in the past, we're seeing it happen in California, and everything that, that we can do at Truckee Meadows is, I mean, it's just extremely important. Okay, let me get to a couple of other things that, that I've got written down. So I was at our cab meeting on the 7th, September 7th, and the sheriff has done a great job with catalytic converters marking them, but what I think we need to do, commissioners, is work collaboratively with the two municipalities, excuse me, because if we create an ordinance, it will not pertain to the city of Reno, nor will it pertain to the city of Sparks. And I think what we need to do is, we need to make it illegal to possess a catalytic, a catalytic converter without the right documentation, period, whether they're marked or not, because this is still happening everywhere. I mean, it's, it is, marking them is great, but then there are some automobile dealers who are saying that they don't want marked cars with, you know, marked catalytic converters on the cars, and, and they won't purchase them, and et cetera. So it's a great program, I, I think that putting the VIN number on the cat is, is wonderful, but what's happening, and what, what they informed us of, is they're taking them over the hill, and they're selling them. So I, I think that, that we need to just be a little more proactive. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, at that same cab meeting, we had N. Dot come out and talk to us about the Pyramid Highway. I'm frustrated with the Pyramid Highway. I'm beyond frustrated. I have asked, I've pleaded, I've begged, and so, so Commissioners, Hill, Vice Chair Hill and Jung, I, I mean, I don't know what to do, because we have to start planning, we should have started planning 10 years ago. And the problem is, is in Spanish Springs, we have development that is occurring in both Sparks and in Washoe County. And so, so it's all being flooded onto the Pyramid Highway, and, and so we've, I mean, we really need to make sure that there is some coordination. In fact, one of the speakers earlier talked about Highland Ranch Parkway, we're going to do a second reading. Staff, I don't know how we work with the two different developers on Highland Ranch Parkway, but we, I don't disagree with the fact that, that if we can condition somehow to have a light go in up on Highland Ranch, because the Five Ridges subdivision is going to punch a ton of traffic back onto Highland Ranch Parkway. It's, it's anticipated that there'll be 17,000 trips per day coming out of that, that development, which is in the city of Sparks up there. So, so that said, this is not a castigation, it is, it's, it's, we have to start planning, we have to start preparing now. So Commissioners, you, you tell me what we need to do, if it's write a letter, if it's send both of you to the governor, I mean, I, I don't know, you guys tell me what we need to do, because I, I feel like the system is intransigent, intransigent at this point. Okay, let me keep going. I also want to talk, Commissioner Lucy, you mentioned the, the flat fields, the Flood Management Authority has, we've, we've been, we've been talking about, since I've been on the Flood Management Authority, I've been on there for 10 years, we've been talking about those, those flat fields. The problem is, is building them now is that we need that space in order to do our flood project. And so that's why we've been a little, a little hesitant, because we need that, we need that room to build it. So, but we can certainly, we can certainly talk about that again, and talk about the timelines, and is there any space in there? Part of it is leased, as you know, to a resident farmer, and then the piece is over off of Edison, we use periodically for all kinds of stuff, but is still, I mean, it's a problem. I would love to do something that would, that would solve the problem of the folks landing there, and we, you know, we have to push them to our other centers, and, and then just the, just, just kind of the, the non-use of that space. And I think that, I think that it would be an incredible use of that area, and that area is just north of the river, south of Mill Street, and then west of McCarran and east of Rock. It's that whole entire section, it's not a section of land, but it's, but it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good piece of land there. So we are talking about that. Ditches in Silver Knolls, Mr. Solero, let's, let's work backwards, Mr. Crump, because I believe we got a, an acknowledgement by Lifestyle Homes, that they would assist us with off-site improvements through that subdivision, because that lake down at the bottom, well, they actually own a 40-acre parcel down at the very end, that they were going to need to use for their own flood management, their own flood storage, their own stormwater storage. And so Bob listener and Peter listener told me that they would give assistance creating some type of a, a new system going through that subdivision. So let's, let's talk about that again, and let's talk about the timing of that, and what a regional stormwater utility might look like in that area. Commissioner Jung and Commissioner and Vice Chair Hill, thank you for mentioning the State of the City of Sparks, the State of the City. It was very, it was very well-attended, and I agree, Commissioner Jung, they have great vision. It's, it's, it's really, it's, it's great what they're doing there, and I, it underscores the need, you know, when I first got on this board, we talked about, in fact, you guys, not, not you, but our previous board, Commissioner Jung, you were the, you were the only one that was there, sent me as our representative to the, and this was appointed by Governor Sandevall, which is the Nevada Lands Transfer Task Force, and we talked about the 7,700 acres of checkerboard land. There were many counties that wanted all of their land to be turned back over to them from the BLM, and I, I actually disagreed with that, and the, the commission, the commission also disagreed with that, because we cannot manage many thousands of, of square miles in the north, in the event of a wildfire, that who would pay for that? And it would be the taxpayers of Washoe County would be on the hook for that. But those 7,700 acres of checkerboard lands out east, and I know, Commissioner Lucy, you worked on it, and worked tirelessly on it, and it, and hit roadblock after roadblock, but we, what we really do need, that checkerboard land out there to, to have a, a process in place. Last two things, Commissioner Lucy, thank you for bringing this up, congratulations to Ms. Taylor, Ms. Kathleen Taylor, as the new city council member at the city of Reno. I think she'll do a phenomenal job, she is very, very smart, she understands planning very well, her husband was one of the, the heavy hitters, or I think it's her ex-husband, heavy hitters at RTC for many years, very dear friend, so I, I think she's, I think she's going to be a great addition. And then finally, forgive my loquacious nature, the 9th of September, and I'm just going to read this, from the American Transplant Foundation, and this is, and this was the 9th, "Today is worth celebrating, it was just announced that the U.S. hit 1 million organ transplants since the first organ transplant in 1954." So we finally hit a million. Queen Elizabeth was 28 at the time, and the transplant field today is, is only 68 years old. It's interesting to note that the USA, Spain, and France perform the most organ transplants per year. So thank you for, to everyone who has that little heart on your driver's license, it's really important. And thank you to all the folks who are involved in helping guide families through the organ transplant process. It is not easy, it is long, it is daunting, it is complex to get on the UNOS list. I, I have personal experience with this, and so I, I speak from direct experience. God bless my wife, thank you, Sandra, for all the hard work that you did in getting our daughter on that list, and even though it was not necessary, but it was, it was, it would have been impossible for me to, to do it by myself. So, so thank you, honey, I appreciate you. And I appreciate all the folks that, that, their family members that have donated organs over the years that they've lost family members, and, and so that's, that's what I have to say, I'm starting to get choked up, forgive me. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next.
Mr. Chair.
It was on my list. Mr. Manager.
I have one correction, it's been brought to my attention, that we now have all of our Dropbox locations fully staffed, including the tribal organization.
Thank you.
So I want to correct that and apologize for that error.
Good. And will you also follow up on the question of the third-party mailing firms, because I don't think their, their lists are complete?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations to Ms. Rodriguez, too, with all of her work and, and her staff, I mean, all the work that they've done to, to clean a lot of those issues up, they've done a lot of work, so, at least over the last couple of months, so looking forward to that election in November, under her, her guidance.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay? Oh, I do have one other thing. Mr. Manager, can we, can we look into potentially doing a proclamation at our next board meeting, if we can get it written for Constitution Day? I think that's important, to acknowledge our Constitution of the United States of America, our, our guiding document. Okay? All right. If there is nothing else, let's go to item number nine, our consent agenda. Are there any questions on, Mr. Manager, would you take us into that item?
Item, item nine is consent items, I have no changes, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on the consent agenda, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on item number nine?
Yes, sir, there is, for item nine, A1 is Darla Lee.
Okay.
I was going to say good morning, but now it's afternoon, so good afternoon, for the record, Darla Lee. I wanted to take time this afternoon to support the new agreement between city of Sparks and Washoe County and the First Tee of Northern Nevada, the renewal of the original 25-year agreement to provide affluent water to the Wild Creek Golf Course, but without... Golf Course, but without the cost burden, will be a great benefit to the operating cost of First Tee and by extension, a great benefit to the community. As some of you know, myself and others were very vocal a few years ago to protest the sale of half of Wild Creek Golf Course to Washoe County School District. But fortunately, the end result has been that First Tee was eventually made the owners, or at least I'm told the deed will finally be recorded soon, of what remains of the golf course. So this organization, First Tee's goal, as I'm sure most of you are aware, is to teach school students the game of golf. And hopefully, there will be some there from the new Hug High. But it's not just golf skills, but moral principles. I would say like, for example, not cheating on the course, not lying on your scorecards, and accepting a win with grace. These principles are sorely needed by our young people, I would say, and of course, by extension, all of us. So I certainly hope you will approve this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion on item nine.
Mr. Chairman, I am happy to make a motion on items nine, A1 through nine, I1.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Herman, under discussion. I wanted to thank Mr. Solero and his team for the hard work that they've done, not just in this particular case on the First Tee, but commissioners, you, you may not realize how hard this team works, our effluent management team, to get golf courses off of groundwater, off of potable drinking water, and on to effluent. And it, and it's, I mean, it's an amazing use of that resource, and it helps the community tremendously. So thank you so much for, for that and those, those long-term leases, because I think that that's extremely important. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Vice Chair Hill, would you give us, would you entertain us with a block vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that we look at blocking items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion by Hill, second by Jung. Mr. Manager, would you read those items in, and then we will take public comment?
Certainly. Item 10, Community Services recommends to accept a Nevada Department of Wildlife Shooting Range grant in the amount of $407,169 with Washoe County as sub-grantee, with a cashing, a cashing kind match in the amount of $45,241, as outlined in the staff report. Item 11 is a community service, Community Services recommends to authorize MWH Constructors and KG Walters Construction as a construction management at risk and approve guaranteed maximum price agreement for A to construct headworks, grit removal, and new blower building, which are at a part of the South Truckee Metals Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project in the amount of $13,375,876, as outlined in the staff report. Item 12 is the manager's office recommends to approve allocations of American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the following projects: Northern Nevada Public Health, Washoe County Health District, Mobile Outreach Vehicle Command Post, Juvenile Services, Multi-Systemic Therapy Pilot Program for High-Risk Juvenile Justice Involved with Youth, Involved Youth, Second Judicial District Court Family Peace Center, Office of the County Manager, Elections Translation, and County Website Accessibility, Human Services Aegis Agency, Senior Services, Saw Serve Machine, Sun Valley General Improvement District, Recreation Revitalization, and Palomino Valley General Improvement District Road Restoration, as outlined in the staff report. Item 13 is the Health District recommends to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $246,669.96 with no county match in both revenues and expenditures to Underground Storage Tank Inspections Program Retroactive to July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, as outlined in the staff report. Item 14, Health District recommends to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $456,864.77, no county match in both revenues and expenditures to Immunization Program Retroactive to July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, as outlined in the staff report. Item 15, the Health District recommends Washoe County Bid Number 3178-22 for the purchase of one mobile command center and health service, services vehicle to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. LDV, Inc., 180 Industrial Drive, Burlington, Wisconsin 53105, on behalf of the Washoe County Health District for $575,498, as outlined in the staff report. Item 16 is a Human Resources recommends to approve the calendar year 2023 Health Benefits Program for employees, retirees, and other dependents at an approximate annual cost of $60.9 million, $60.9 million, as outlined in the staff report. Item 17, Technology Services recommends to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 renewal of the Amintum Technologies Manatron Contract in the amount of $316,983, retroactive to July 1st, 2022, for the Treasurer's Tax System Software Maintenance Agreement, as outlined in the staff report. Item 18 is Technology Services recommends to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Master Services Agreement between Washoe County and Vonage Business, Inc., for the sole source purchase of Unified Communications as a service not to exceed $375,000. County is entering the second year of a five-year agreement with Vonage as outlined in the staff report. Registrar voters recommends approve the acceptance of the Secretary of State's Budget Appropriation to Washoe County in the amount of $323,935 to reimburse the county for voting equipment, licensing, and support fees for fiscal year 2022 and 2023, as outlined in the staff report. Mr. Chair, that concludes the block vote.
I apologize, Mr. Manager. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the block of items 10 through 19?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion by Hill. Who's our second? Jung, wasn't it?
Yes.
Commissioner Jung, who is still in the audience. Okay, all right, good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of these items? We have taken public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I think motion carries unanimously. It does. Commissioners, I want to go back just real briefly to one last thing that I forgot to mention because it's really important. And I'll be bringing this up again Friday, November 4th, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. We will be ribbing, cutting the ribbon at the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza, which is really important. And the mission of the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza is to preserve and honor the legacy of our fallen Nevada service members since 1864. Very important. So I'll, I'll keep bringing it up. I'll make sure, and I, I forgot. Okay. Mr. Manager, that now takes us into item number 20. Will you open that up, and I will open the public hearing?
Item 20 is a public hearing, second reading.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you give us an ordinance number, please?
If approved, this will be ordinance number 1691, an ordinance pursuant to Nevada Revised Statutes 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and Highland, and LC Highland 2, LLC for Highland Village 2, which limits the gross density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre for the plus or minus 18.3 acre project area. APN numbers 508-020-04, 42, and 44, for a maximum of 82 total dwelling units. It was formerly bill number 1881.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, do we need any reports on this from staff? Because I see staff sitting in the audience. Okay? Commissioner Herman, this is your district. Would you like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1691? How about just move to adopt ordinance number 1691 as listed in the staff report?
Sorry about that. I don't know if it's on. Yep, it is. Okay, move to adopt ordinance number, it's on the other side.
1691.
1691, as provided by the county clerk, which is an ordinance pursuant to NRS 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and LC Highland 2, LLC for Highland Village 2, which limits the gross density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre for the 18.3 acre project area. APNs 508-020-04, 42, and 44, for a maximum of 82 total dwelling units. The approval is based on the board's ability to make all the findings required by WCC Section 110.814.30D, and further to authorize the chair to execute the final development agreement upon adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Herman, second by Commissioner Jung. We did hear a presentation on this last month, and that was introduced. Is there any other discussion on this? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
There is none.
Okay, close public comment, bring it back to the board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Affirm your votes. Okay, thank you so much, commissioners. Mr. Manager, that now takes us into item number 21.
Item 21 is a public hearing, second reading as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you give us an ordinance number and introduce this?
This will be ordinance number 1692, if approved, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 55, Animals and Fowl, by repealing a section duplicate of state law related to harboring a vicious dog, by adding a section making it unlawful to fail to quarantine or surrender for quarantine, biting animals or animals that have been in close contact with an animal suspected or known to have rabies, by adding a section governing euthanasia of vicious dogs, by amending provisions related to the definitions of dangerous dog, vicious dog, animal, substantial bodily harm, and provocation, the dangerous and vicious dog determination process, exemptions under which a dog may not be found dangerous or vicious, the requirements for dangerous and vicious dog registration, requirements for relocating or transferring ownership of a dangerous or vicious dog, unlawful acts by the owner or keeper of a dangerous or vicious dog, impoundment of a dog, both before and after a dangerous or vicious dog determination, by updating a section governing the criminal and civil penalties for violation of Chapter 55. This was bill number 1882.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, is there any need for any information from staff? We have Ms. Shul in the audience. Okay, all right. Before we take a motion on ordinance number 1692, on adopting that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number 1692 as listed in the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance number 1692 as listed in the staff report.
Okay. Have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four to one. Please affirm your votes, with Commissioner Herman being in the opposition. Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Shul, for coming out. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to our final public comment.
Item 22 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
We have Nicholas St. John signed in, but he is no longer in chambers, so there is nobody else to speak.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number 20.
Item 29 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information on topics for future agendas.
Okay. I have it listed as item 23, Mr. Manager.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
29. I apologize. I'm not trying to be pedantic. I just want to make sure that my agenda is correct.
Would you like me to read it again, Mr. Chair?
Correct.
I'm sorry, it's item 23.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
I just want to point out to the commission, I will be attending ICMA, the International City and County Managers Association Conference in Columbus, starting this Friday. So I'll miss next week's meeting, but you'll be in capable hands. I'll be returning next Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you so much for the hard work with that. I know that that's, that's, that's a great conference, and, and it's a, it's a great time for everyone to, to kind of meld minds and, and learn from each other. The only thing new in the world is the history that you don't know. I applaud that. Commissioners, anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Chairman, one last thing.
Ms. Lucy.
Do you want to remind everybody that we will be having the NACO, Nevada NACO, which is Nevada Association of Counties, their annual state conference at the end of the month in Story County up in Virginia City. And so it will be, hopefully, all of the commissioners here can come and attend, and staff will attend and participate in the educational sessions and, and some of the great things that we have going on over the duration of that conference. Look forward to people attending to that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And yeah, and you are the, the president. Look forward to the president's reception. I wanted to mention just one more time. I opened it back up, but I'm going to say it one more time. The Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza invites you to their grand opening and the ribbon cutting. The date is Friday, November 4th, at 3:00 p.m. The place is the Sparks Marina on the west side. The mission of the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza is to preserve and honor the legacy of our fallen Nevada service members since 1864. Please put it on your calendar. We would love to have you come out. It's, it's truly an amazing, amazing memorial, and we're, we are really, really proud of it. I, I serve on their board. It is not through the commission. This is something that Ron Smith and Christopher Dare started, and as both, as all of us know, Mayor Smith passed away. Christopher Dare, Councilman Dare, has been amazing. He really picked up the, the torch and has run with it, and, and he's going to take us over the finish line. So we look forward to having all of you there. Did I knock anything loose for anyone? If not, thank you so much, commissioners. We are adjourned.